You ready to move on?
Yep. Good evening, welcome to the Lone Tree City Council City Council meeting for June 16th, 2020. This is our regular meeting. We are waiting till 7:05 to allow some of the folks that are going to be joining us virtually to hop onto the meeting. But while we wait, I will give you an explanation of what we're doing this evening. So in order to comply with the sixth amended Public Health Order 20-28, which recommends against government-held meetings of more than 10 people, the city is limiting physical attendance at public meetings to only essential staff and elected officials. We will continue to provide access to public meetings via electronic participation for members of the public. All attendees, including staff and council members, are required to wear face masks, face coverings when entering and exiting the building and when we are within six feet of another person. The city will also implement symptom monitoring measures for attendees, including temperature checks and a completion of the city's Facilities Health Screening Survey before entering the meeting. There are three ways to be providing a public comment virtually this evening. Comments that were submitted prior to the meeting will be written into the record by a member of our staff. If you would like to type "public comments" during the public comment portion of the agenda, click the "Ask a Question" in the sidebar of the virtual meeting and enter your name and address in the message window along with your public comment. Your name and comments will be read into the record by staff on your behalf. These messages are not visible to other members of the public watching the meeting. If you would like to speak to council live using your telephone, please indicate that in the "Ask a Question" box and submit your name, address, and phone number. You will receive a call back from the city staff to hear your public comment during that portion of our meeting. All comments should be directed to City Council, and we ask that you limit your comments to three minutes. Again, I want to remind everyone that even though you're asking, typing your questions in the "Ask a Question" box, this is not a question-and-answer portion of the meeting. It really is the opportunity for the public to provide their feedback and views to council. It will not be an interactive discussion. So thank you for that again. We're waiting till 7:05, which has now arrived. So I will formally open the meeting, and I will ask the city clerk to call the roll.
Councilmembers Anderson.
Here.
Carpenter.
Here.
Shaw.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Brunink.
Here.
Mayor Malley.
Here. Okay, we have a quorum present. I'm going to ask everyone to stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Well, I don't know about you guys, but that felt good to do that with all of you in one room versus me doing it in my office by myself. So I liked hearing all the extra voices. There are no amendments to the agenda. It stands as published. Are there any conflicts of interest from councilmembers?
None.
Wonderful. Okay, we are on to the public comment portion of our meeting. Again, this is for brief comments on items that are not on our agenda. And again, council is not going to be responding to the questions. This is your, the public's opportunity to provide feedback to us. I will ask our city clerk, were there any comments submitted in writing ahead of the meeting?
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. I'm not seeing any comments submitted ahead of time.
So nothing was submitted ahead of time? I will ask if anybody has had the opportunity to ask them in the "Ask a Question" box virtually. And we'll give everyone a couple of minutes to do that, or...
Yeah, I'm not seeing any comments in the question box.
Okay, again, I want to remind everyone, they could submit their questions in the "Ask a Question" in the sidebar if they're attending the virtual meeting, or you could request a phone call from us. I'm going to just pause for a minute or so to allow folks to do that. I know while we're waiting for a potential public comment, I'm going to check with our city manager to find out if we have our, all the presenters were able to call into the meeting, Seth? Double checking.
Yeah, she can, she can call in. I think because she didn't get on by 7:00, she kind of missed the launch, so she'll have to call in.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, I didn't realize that. Is there any way to... I guess if there was a way, you'd know if we go do something else and go back to that, would it be opportunity for her to do it?
Yeah, she'll just have to call in.
Okay.
To the meeting.
Okay, so do you want to, do you want to make arrangements to do that?
Yep, I just sent her the...
So while we're waiting for, and I'm assuming no public comment has come in at that time? All right, while we're waiting to have our outstanding Youth of Lone Tree Award winner call in, I will, I will identify a couple of other upcoming events. And again, City of Lone Tree events can, information on those can always be found at www.cityoflone tree.com and lonetreeartscenter.org. I want to let everyone know there'll be a community blood drive Wednesday, the 24th, at the Lone Tree Arts Center from 11:00 to 3:45. Please visit the city website for more information. Our city offices will be closed for Independence Day, Friday, July 3rd. Have we, were we able to get the Hamilton family on the phone?
We are waiting for them to call in. I apologize.
No worries. Do we want to try and run the short video on an upcoming fundraising effort for the art center? Or should we pause on that, Seth?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Okay, while we're waiting, we want to share with council a new initiative that you've heard about, and it's the Community Challenge to raise some funds for our art center to make sure we can continue to provide the high-quality programming. So...
...any of you, so we really appreciate your leadership in that. And I'm really excited about the business community's response to the, you know, our willingness to help us step up in this effort as well.
So Seth, it's a $180,000...
That's the goal by the end of the summer.
...to raise over the summer. So it's a lofty goal, so we appreciate everyone who's, who has already contributed or has made a pledge to contribute.
Right, I'm trying to do this on the fly. Here we go. Good job. And volume, there you go.
Nope. I'm not the sounder. Well, it was a good thought.
This is why we...
We're having a little technical trouble with the sound, so maybe, maybe... I feel like what's behind curtain number two? Were we able to get in touch with the Hamilton family?
She is attempting to call in now. It's like a conference call setting where there's a long 1-800 number and then a code.
Yep, I appreciate that. So I think this speaks to one of the challenges we have all had during our crisis. And, you know, this is our first attempt at the virtual meeting at combo with, with staff and council present. And I think we appreciate any, all of your patience as, again, we try and work through these challenging times. And, and I would suggest if this is the biggest of our problems in our day-to-day, then we are all blessed. So...
That's right.
Given what's happening in our world, we can deal with technical difficulties. As long as I didn't cause them, so...
Okay, we did receive a call. Hello, Riley, are you on the phone?
I am, yeah.
Riley, we are so happy to hear your voice and congratulations, so...
Thank you so much.
So we are, we have, we are sorry that we don't get to physically see your face with us, but I know we've got some very important folks that have a lot of wonderful things to say about you and about this award and the great work of our Youth Commission. So I am going to ask councilmember Jay Carpenter, who is the council's liaison to the Youth Commission, to kind of introduce this and then introduce Anna, who will be presenting the award.
Great, excellent. Well, as you all know, this is one of my favorite assignments throughout the year of the Outstanding Youth of Lone Tree, and I have the privilege of getting to work with the Youth Commission and do all the, conduct all the interviews. And it was really refreshing to see the Youth Commission themselves, and I wanted to applaud Anna for her leadership on that, in that process, with help also from Austin and Leanna in terms of trying to come to, these are really hard decisions to make. The caliber and the, these kids are incredibly dynamic, all deserving of it. And it's, it's a, the bar gets set higher every year. It just gets harder and harder to make that final decision. But Riley really, really impressed all of us, and, and the Youth Commission themselves did come to the, to the final selection. But I'll just highlight for you a few things that I, that I enjoyed speaking with Riley. So she is really super involved. I don't know how she can do all these things between volunteering and her schoolwork and her participation in the community. And the award, that's really what the award speaks to, is community involvement and integrity and, and passion and leadership. And she exudes all of those, all of those. So one piece that she's really involved with the 4H as well, but she, she has a brother who has some reading difficulties. And so she created a reading club at an elementary school and all inspired by her brother and one, and took the initiative, did it all on her own without, I mean, I'm sure there was outside help, obviously. But it's incredible to see what she built through that. And one of the questions that we ask all candidates is, well, what are you going to do with the prize money? And it's, you know, you get some laughs every now and then. And she was quick to answer that she was going to buy more prizes for the reading club that she's a part of. So it was, it was just a really cool thing, Riley. It was really, really impressive. And I know that, I believe that staff had already gotten you the plaque. Is that correct? And you got a gift, a bag of goodies today? But you'll be enshrined in the plaque that we have in the city offices as well. But again, I just wanted to turn it over to you. If any, any comments you wanted to make? Again, I was, we all were extremely impressed by your interview and all that you do for the community at large, so...
So great, Jay. Should we, I think Anna Smith is joining us from the Youth Commission. So Anna, would you like to say a few words?
Anna, you might be muted. I was getting some background noise, so I muted the two phone calls.
Can you unmute her, Jay?
You unmute him. No. Anna, Riley, are you, are either of you there?
Well...
I can tell at a later date.
There she goes. Riley, are you there?
I'm here.
Yes, Anna, are you here? Is that you? I can't tell Riley and Anna's voice, but I'm thinking that's Anna now, right?
Um, this is Riley.
Oh, it's Riley. Well, sweetheart, oh, excuse, well, honey, sorry. This is not going quite as we had planned, but let's go with this. We could not be prouder to have young adults like you in our community leading the way. And I think what we have all discovered over the course of the last 14 or so weeks is that the youth of our community is now more important than ever. And you guys will be leading the way for our future. And it's really wonderful and inspiring to hear the stories of the great work that you've done to lift up not just your brother, but all the other kids that he's interacting with and the kids at that elementary school. So we are going to have another time when we are actually all allowed to get together, and we would really like to invite you back to a council meeting in person where we can take an awesome picture and have the plaque with your name along with all the other Outstanding Youth of Lone Tree Award winners there. And I want to thank councilmember Carpenter for his great work with our Youth Commission and the efforts that he put in interviewing all those kids, because we gave, we gave him the hardest job on council, trying to decide which one of our amazing, outstanding youth in Lone Tree is going to get the award this year. So Riley, I also want to just tell your parents that what a wonderful job they did and make sure you thank them for raising up such a great kid, because we sure appreciate all the folks and the adults who have been in your life lifting you up as well. So again, we're going to do this again, much better. But for now, gratitude, appreciation, really. And the other thing I want to give a huge shout out to is Canvas Credit Union. Canvas Credit Union is one of our tremendous local business partners, and they provided the financial reward that was associated with the, with this honor. So again, a huge thanks to Canvas Credit Union. You guys make a huge difference in people's lives and in the City of Lone Tree. So thanks for your good work, too. So Riley, you have to promise me you'll come back, okay?
I will, yeah. I'd love to meet everyone if you're in person.
Wonderful. Thank you so much and thanks for your great work, okay? And Anna, if you're out there, thank you for the great work for the Youth Commission. We so appreciate your good efforts there. And, and again, apologies, it's the first time we're doing it this way, and we're going to get better. So thanks, everybody. So that, and again, thanks to Canvas Credit Union. That was our announcements and our presentation. And I think we're going to just jump right to Consent Agenda, which is minutes from our June 2nd, 2020 Regular City Council Meeting, claims through the period of May 26th to June 8th, 2020, and the April 2020 Treasurer's Report. If there are no questions on consent, I'll look for a motion from council.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Okay, moving on to administrative matters. The acceptance of the 2019 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, affectionately known as the CAFR, and our Finance Director, Uli, who is going to introduce this.
Good evening, again, Mayor, City Council. And I think we may have run into another technical difficulty. Our auditor, who is supposed to call in, he's not able to hear us. So Jay, I wonder if you could maybe send him the information to call into the meeting? But I will go ahead and get us started here.
Thanks, Uli.
And so with this presentation, I really want to walk you through the audit of the 2019 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, which I will refer to as CAFR going forward as well, and highlight and touch on some of the highlights for the 2019 Financial Statement Year, which was a great year.
The good old days.
The good old days, exactly. Following that, we will have Brent from Ida Bailey join us to talk a little bit about the Audit Report and the Letter to Governance. And at the end of the presentation, we will look in for a motion from council to accept the 2019 CAFR. So a little bit of background on why we are issuing a CAFR each year. It is required by state law that we have to complete a set of financial statements in each individual year, seven months after the close of the year. Those financial statements have to be published and, and compiled in conformance with the generally accepted accounting principles of the United States. And they will have to be in accordance with, audited and accordance with the generally accepted auditing standards by a firm-licensed CPAs. On the next slide, I'll be just going briefly through the 2019 Audit Schedule, which started in December with the interim field work where the Ida Bailey team actually joined us in our office at the municipality, municipal building, and spent a week at our building to, to perform the field work. The finance staff then drafted the report, starting around February, ending in, in April of 2020. And we started field work on April 13th. So that actually was pushed back by a week. It was originally planned for April 7th, but due to COVID hitting and making arrangements on how to work through the field work process, our auditors were flexible enough to allow us to push the field work back by a week. At this point, again, I want to mention the full audit, the full field work this year was performed remotely. So all of the document exchange, as well as the meetings, all happened remotely. The CAFR that was then presented to the Audit Committee on June 3rd, and they recommend to council to accept the 2019 financial statements. That was unanimously accepted by the Audit Committee. And today, we're here to present the 2019 CAFR to council for acceptance. Once accepted, we will be filing the CAFR with the state before our deadline of June 30th. We will also be applying again to, for the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting. We received the certificate in the past years, and it's always great to win or receive an award. But what I really like about this certification is we receive feedback back from the Government Finance Officers Association, which really helps us not just update the information of the CAFR and implement new accounting standards, but it helps us improve the document year over year. In the next slide, just what is included in, in the city's CAFR, the 2019 CAFR. Obviously, the City of Lone Tree, as the primary government, is listed, and all of the financial transactions are listed. We are also listing three component units. The first one is Park Meadows Business Improvement District. The second, the Lone Tree Business Improvement District. Both of those districts received and went through independent audit with their financial statements. Both of them received an unqualified opinion, which is a clean opinion. And we're incorporating the Lone Tree Art Center Fund, the FIFO 1C3. The reason why we incorporate those component units is due to a certain level of dependency on the city. So we're required to incorporate them in our CAFR. Going to the, to the highlights, the financial highlights summary. Again, assets exceeded their liabilities by $149.7 million at the close of the fiscal year. The governmental funds reported a combined ending balance of $34.4 million, with the total net position increasing from 2018 to 2019 of roughly $24 million. And, and a lot of that is due to partnership funding that we received for Richgate Parkway Expansion. One, one highlight that I wanted to point out here is our sales and use tax revenue actually decreased by $112,000. This is mainly contributable to the shift to online shopping. This is not just isolated to Lone Tree. It's a, it's a national shift. But since we're so dependent on sales tax, we're monitoring and keeping a pulse on that development. And then finally, we ended the year with an assigned and unassigned fund balance in the general fund of $18.5 million. And those two fund balances really, they include in the majorities made up of the capital replacement reserve as well as the working reserve. Highlight, a couple of highlights, just the changes to the financials and the notes that accompany the financial statements compared to prior years is, one, we combined our non-major funds. So our non-major funds include both of our debt service funds as well as the Lone Tree Art Cent, Art Center Fund. All three of those are now combined into one column in our governmental-wide statements, and they're titled "Other Governmental Funds." All of the detail is still listed in, in our report. They are now moved to the Combining in Individual Fund Financial Statements section of the report and still include all of the detail that you've seen previously, including budget to actuals. Another change that we included this year is, and we've been talking about this a lot, the event of COVID-19. So this is a subsequent event that happened after year-end, which there's a requirement that we have to disclose this, and we worked with our auditors on this disclosure, really just outlining that the event is happening, that the event is having a impact on the financial statements for 2020. And at the point of, or the date of the issuance of the financial statement, that the full impact to the city's financial position is not yet known. And we disclosed in the beginning of the, of the CAFR, where we talk about the city overall, we disclosed the impacts of COVID-19 to our sales tax revenue specifically there as well. The audit results, this is the exciting part again. There is, no audit adjustments were required this year, or this year, 2019. No internal control deficiencies were found, which, which is great news. There was nothing noted in the Letter to Governance other than a footnote. There was not included for the Park Meadows BID in regards to future minimum lease payment obligations, and we've carried that over the last years. So Ida Bailey issued an unmodified opinion, which is a clean opinion, the best that you can receive. And at this point, I just wanted to give a shout out to Wu and the finance team just for being so flexible in regards to working remotely on all of this, the outstanding work that they have done, but also to Ida Bailey and their flexibility that they have shown. This was truly a team approach, and I was very impressed with just how organized both teams were. So with that, I would like to hand it off to Brent to talk a little bit about the opinion and the Letter to Governance.
Yeah, thank you, Uli. And hopefully you guys can hear me now that I've got my IT issues fixed. Yeah, which is good.
We can even see you, Brent, it's the added bonus. Welcome.
Well, thank you guys for allowing me to be here to introduce or to present the, our audit opinion this year. And that's really what you pay us for. But before I do, before I get into the audit opinion and, and the Letter to Governance, I first want to say thank you, Mayor and City Council, and for allowing us to, to work with you guys again this year. And really, I want to commend, Uli already kind of stole the words from me. I just want to commend the staff, let alone, like, 2019 was, you had some turnover in the finance department. It was, you know, good turnover because everyone, you know, the movement around the city. But that's always generally an issue going into any audit, is just that, that transition, let alone throw in COVID and, and working remotely. And I just want to commend the finance staff and how smooth the audit went. Even, even on a normal year, audits don't go as smoothly as, as that has. So well done to, to your finance team.
Thank you for acknowledging their good work. We, we are very proud of the great team, and Uli just really stepped in with both feet. So thanks for acknowledging that, Brent. We appreciate that.
So I, I'm not going to share my screen because I don't want to mess up the presentation anymore. But I'm going to go through the audit opinion first, and then I'll, I'll follow it up with the letter. And if, I think, if you have the CAFR in front of you, it's in, on page 14 and 15 of the CAFR. If you want to follow along, I'll just kind of, kind of hit the highlights a little bit. The first paragraph of that is, is, you know, what we, what we report on. And that's the, you know, the accompanying financial statements of the governmental activities, the aggregate discreetly presented component units, which Uli already went through the, the Lone Tree Business Improvement District and the PMBID. Each major fund and then the aggregate remaining fund information. And I think, again, Uli kind of explained that very well. As of, and for the year ended December 31, 2019. The second, the second paragraph is, basically describes management's responsibility. And that's basically to present, to fairly, you know, they're responsible for the fair presentation of these financial statements of the CAFR. And, and really, the main, the implementation, maintenance, and design of the internal controls relevant to those. Our responsibility as auditors is to express opinion on that, and this is what we, this letter reflects that. Also, as noted, we, we did not audit the PMBID or the LTBID, which are 100% of the component units shown, as shown in the CAFR. We did conduct our audit in accordance with generally accept, generally accepted auditing standards. And those standards require us to, to plan and perform the audit to obtain reasonable assurance, not absolute, but reasonable assurance, that, that the financial statements are free of material misstatement. And that, that includes, if, if you're following along, the next paragraph, it, it includes, you know, obtaining audit evidence to support the footnotes and the numbers you see in the CAFR. The second page, really, that's, this is, again, this is what you pay us for. This is our opinion. And Uli already mentioned, it's the best you can get. It's an unmodified opinion. And basically, what you're seeing... And basically, what you're seeing, what you're seeing in front of you is materially correct. So again, that's the bottom line of this opinion. It does go on to talk about the required supplementary information, which we do not audit. But we do perform limited procedures. And that includes the management's discussion and analysis, the budgetary comparison information, and then some of the pension information, kind of in the back pages. And then it discusses the other information included in the CAFER. Well, it doesn't specifically say supplementary information that the last paragraph on that second page really goes over supplementary information because that's derived from the financial information you see in the overall financial statements. We do auditing procedures over the supplementary information. And again, the last sentence of the second page, in our opinion, the information is fairly stated in all material respects. Finally, the last page of that audit opinion just kind of talks about the introductory section and the statistical sections, which we do not audit or do any auditing procedures over that. They're just for your information. So that is the audit opinion. Again, the best you can get. So I will, if, I don't know on your packet where the letter to governance is. But if you have that in front of you, I'll just...
Page five and six.
Okay, I'll just skim through this real quick. I won't get into too much detail because some of it is a regurgitation of the audit opinion. But the first paragraph does talk about what we audited. And it does include, we did do an audit of the individual basic financial statements of the Cultural and Community Services Fund that is required, which is Form A of like the SEFD requirements. So that was part of what we did. But you're just seeing the CAFER tonight. And then it goes, the second, the first remain is just, again, our responsibility over the audit. And then it talks about, you know, we did, we conducted our audit consistent with the plan, scope, and timing that we've, we sent a letter to you, I think, back in February. So just to say, we did that. That we are in compliance with all ethics regarding independence. The second page talks about significant accounting policies. And there were no significant new policies that were implemented this year that we needed to bring forth to you guys this year. So there are no new accounting policies or changes in such policies this year for 2019, should I say. The next section talks about significant estimates. And those really relate to the pension liabilities and OPEB, the post-employment benefit liabilities and account balances. And those, we evaluated those, the factors that went in there. And they're all, they're based on actuarial assumptions. So then it goes on for the financial statement disclosures. And we have to identify significant sensitive disclosures. And those, we found to be the fund balance in Note 4, commitments in Note 11, pension plans and OPEB, you know, including OPEB in Notes 12 and 13, contingencies in Note 16, related party note in Note 17. And then obviously, Uli mentioned before the subsequent event footnote related to COVID. That's kind of sensitive right now. I'm about done, so we'll continue on the significant. There were no significant difficulties in our audit this year. You know, as I've noted, it went very well. The next part, if there were any misstatements that we identified, they would be listed here. But there were no audit adjustments or misstatements that we noted, we identified in our audit. So that's a good thing. But as mentioned, it does talk about any past disclosures or past adjustments. And we have to put those here as well. And it was already mentioned about the PMBID's disclosure of operating leases. And that'll, those are all changed later, in a couple of years anyway, I think, because of new pronouncements coming down. There were no disagreements with management. We requested that management provide certain written representations, which were done so on May 27, 2020. There were no, management did not consult, that we are aware of, any other accountants to, you know, as consultants that might pertain to something that we did during the audit. And really, there were no other findings. If there were other findings, any internal control items or anything like that, they would probably be listed here. So that in a nutshell is our audit. And again, I thank you for letting me present that to you tonight. And if you have any questions, please let me know.
Well, Brent, thank you. That's why we like it nice and boring every year.
Yes.
No, I appreciate your good work and the good work of your team at IBALELY. I'm going to turn it over to Jay. We're making Councilmember Carpenter work extra hard tonight because he is also the liaison to the Audit Committee. So I'll ask you if there's anything you would like to share with the council.
Yeah, no, it's great to get another clean opinion. Every year I've been involved, that's the case.
Every year, Jay, not just...
Every year. I'll take credit for that. But we'll just do a lot of reiteration. Just, this was not a normal year, and this is Uli's first year at the helm. And just for her flexibility and dedication to the process, and also for Brent, IBALELY's team too, to be a part of that process. But I think it mostly speaks to the controls that we have in place. And so I'd also like to acknowledge Kristen for her leadership over the years in terms of getting that, setting that ship sailing in the right direction. And especially in the year of transition, I think it went really smoothly. I'd also like to acknowledge the Audit Committee themselves for their input and their oversight. We appreciate them as part of that process. So again, another great, I'm not looking forward to seeing 2020 numbers, as we all are. So that's all I'd say again. Thanks for everyone involved in that process, and great job.
Okay, any questions from council members to Uli, to our auditor, or to Jay? Nope. No, I think, again, the foundation was set by our former Finance Director, who is now our Deputy City Manager. And you're absolutely right, Jay, that we are fortunate to have someone who actually was able to fill her shoes in the role as Finance Director. So we know you picked a great successor, and you left big shoes to fill, and she's filling them. So good on you. So I don't have any questions. Again, thanks to IBALELY. I will ask Councilmember Carpenter to make the motion.
Per the recommendation of the Audit Committee, I move to accept the 2019 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report.
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous approval, wonderful. And even though the numbers are going to be trickier next year, we're still going to have a clean audit.
Exactly.
So, all right. Thank you for everyone's great work on that. Moving on to a 9.2, Approval of a Collaboration Agreement Regarding the Distribution of Corona, Virus Aid Relief and Economic Security Acts Funds to County and Local Governments. Our esteemed City Manager, Seth Hoffman, is going to lead us through this. Seth?
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. This is pretty good news, and we'll go to the next slide. The, after quite a delay, the state came up with a formula to distribute some of the CARES Act funding that they received from the federal government a few months ago to local governments. And they did it on a per capita basis, essentially. So each county was split about, I think, I want to say $270 million or something like that. It split among the 64 counties that money. And just based on population, Douglas County was eligible to receive 30 million, just over 30 million. Department of Local Affairs is the fiscal agent that the state has designated. And what they're asking for, but not necessarily requiring, they're asking each county and the municipalities within it to collaborate. But it was strongly suggested that if you don't collaborate, it's not going to go well as far as... So the good news is for us is that we have a really good collaboration already set up with our county partners and the other municipalities. We're on the phone three times a week, as it is anyway. And so this was just something that we added to the list. And that allowed us to have a really good conversation about how the allocation would be. Obviously, per capita doesn't help us very much. And so on the next slide, I think, we talked about, well, let me talk about sort of how they decided to allocate. And we agreed as staff that this was the right approach to split the money. So right off the top, the county is going to keep 20% of the funds, about $6 million. And they actually backed into that number for what it would take to do a significant amount of testing in the next, you know, in the fall throughout the end of the year. So something like, you know, many hundreds of tests a day. What, the way things are shaking out is Tri-County sees themselves as the tracing effort. And, you know, that's where that's going to be centralized out of. So some of that money will go to Tri-County to staff up tracing. The rest will stay with the county to do, actually purchase testing as needed throughout the fall. And I think we've got a wrong number here on the PowerPoint. I'm not sure which one is incorrect. Kristen, is it the, or Uli?
They are actually exactly the same.
Oh, really?
They are, yep.
That's hard to believe.
Oh, that's weird.
Yeah. I should never questioned you on camera. That was dumb. Okay, so those are the numbers. And then the other, then after that, 25% will save for the county, for county-wide expenditures. And then the remaining 75% then is split on this three-factor basis with the rest of the cities. And so the blended allocation of funds on the next slide shows how we came up with that. And so it's a combination of three factors, per capita, based on our population, based on, a third, based on assessed valuation, and then third on FTE count. And the FTE count, I think, was a fair way to do it because Castle Rock, for example, has a lot, you know, has fire and water. And, you know, they provide more services than we do. There is a separate pot of money for special district. It's relatively small. But, you know, South Suburban, Highland Ranch Metro District, they could also, they could go through that special district pot. So next slide. Oh, and then I skipped over it. But our total then comes to, you can see it on this slide, 1.231675 is what we're eligible for. We'll have to, and we're in the process of demonstrating the expenses that we have already incurred and will incur. And we'll talk about how that methodology works. But I do want to point out, so if you look at the first column, the per capita column, you can see what the relative shares would be if that would have been the calculation. So, you know, if you just put all that money into those relative shares, you see that Lone Tree would have been, had a much smaller share. So adding the assessed value. And even the FTEs helped us quite a bit to get to a larger allocation, so...
So Seth, I'm going to pause and acknowledge your good work in making that happen. So I know you were very instrumental in the conversations with the county to ensure that we be fully represented, not just by a population number, but by fully what we bring to the county. And I think we want to let you know how much we appreciate your good work. And then I want to ask council to take a look at that assessed valuation and look at the community, our size, and how our assessed valuation is right up there with the numbers of our partner municipalities that have far greater populations. So when we look at what Lone Tree contributes to Douglas County, to our school districts, to the county itself, we once again punch above our weight in these categories. And again, Seth, kudos to you for making sure that that is acknowledged. So...
Yeah, I appreciate that. Thank you so much. You know, on a probably less happy note, in future allocations from, in the HEROES Act or whatever, if there is a next stimulus or, you know, funding for local governments, I'm almost certain if it comes from Congress, it will be population-based. And so that will not, you know, make a major impact on our budget, even if it does happen for others, you know, relatively, such as the county or places with larger populations, it will likely have a bigger impact than it will on us. So next slide. So Uli has really done a great job of kind of sussing out what is eligible for CARES Act reimbursement. Early on, there was sort of this perception that it could only be spent on sort of, you know, really direct items you're using for, you know, virus fighting, such as PPE or testing or that kind of thing. And so at the beginning, some governments that got this sooner were sort of scratching their heads on what they would be able to use this money for because they weren't spending billions of dollars on PPE because they couldn't find it, probably. But now, what Uli has found is that basically any kind of necessary expenditure incurred due to the public health emergency and wasn't accounted in the budget. You know, we did not account for any of this in the budget, as you know. And so anything, and it includes anything from March 1st through the, not quite the end of the year. It's strange. It's December 30th.
Well, now we know when it's going to end. Thank goodness. It's over December 30th. Next year will be normal. It's been proclaimed.
Yeah. And on the next slide, we talk about what we've identified so far. And so a lot of this is personnel, payroll expense. And because we did shift so many people in our initiatives, it's really easy for us to track what people have been doing that had really substantially been dedicated to mitigating and responding to the virus, both the virus itself and the economic recovery as well. And so we've been, Bill and Uli and others have done a really good job of identifying actually what those positions are and related it right back to the CARES Act and shown what we've spent and then what we project we will spend through the end of the year. And this is something that we have to kind of provide to the county. They want to know, can you really use all this money? Because if you can't, we'll hold on to it. So that's a process that we started last week, and we sent them a memo yesterday that demonstrated that, yes, in fact, we can. And then, of course, the direct expenses. So PPE, building cleanings, even remote work type of expenses that we've had, which have been substantial. Even setting up for this meeting is something that is an eligible expense. Anything that, you know, helps people comply with any public health order. Next slide. So the way it's set up is DOLA needs all of the municipalities and the county to sign the agreement, which is really just an agreement in principle at this point. And that's what's in your packet. And then after that, we'll have a formal IGA, which is not required by DOLA, but just something that we all agree that we do so that we're all on the same page, that will be signed by the county and the municipalities. And we'll bring that back next month. So the timeline is, hopefully, we approve this tonight. The mayor would be authorized to sign it. And then their goal, then the county's trying to get this in as soon as this week. And so other, the other municipalities are all considering it this week as well. And then we'll, like I said, we'll work on the IGA as soon as we wrap up this part. Next slide. I think that's it. What questions?
Okay, any questions for Seth on the agreement?
This is a timely question. When does the money become available?
We're not totally sure, but I think relatively soon is what DOLA. DOLA's charge from the governor was to get it out as quickly as they could. And so I don't think, so it's going to be reimbursed by, through DOLA. So it's not just, the county's not going to get that 30 million all at once. It's kind of, they have to ask for it, and then they'll get a distribution. And they may have to ask for it again, you know, another piece of it, and they'll get... So they're going to have to document that. And so that's what that IGA is going to probably talk about is what we have to provide to the county in order for them to request it from DOLA.
Any other questions? I mean, I think I just want to highlight, oh, yeah. Again, huge thank you to staff. Huge thank you to Uli for really digging in on this and providing... Again, she's... huge thank you to Uli for really digging in on this and providing, again, she's living up to expectations, you know, very large shoes from Kristen. But the other thing I want to just point out, the obvious here, so we were looking at potentially tapping into our reserves of the order of about $2 million, and should this come to fruition, we will be able to lessen the, and you know, we'll be able to leave more of that $5.6 million into our working reserve, which I think makes us all feel a little more comfortable going into next year. So I think this is excellent work by the Lone Tree staff, and again, our thanks to the county for being great partners. And I'm in. So we have a recommendation, and I'll look for a motion from council.
I move to approve the collaboration agreement regarding the distribution of coronavirus aid, relief, and economic securities CARES Act funds to county and local governments and authorize the mayor to execute the agreement.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Yes, we are always in line for money. For good money, for good work. Okay, moving on to our community development agenda, and we have Resolution 20-10, a resolution approving an IGA between the City of Lone Tree and Douglas County regarding the CDBG block grant program for federal fiscal years 2021 to '23, which is administered by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. And we have Jennifer Drive-Bred from Community Development, who is going to be presenting on this virtually. Jennifer, are you with us?
I am. So good to be here. Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks. Wonderful to hear your voice.
Yeah, so nice to see you all tonight and welcome. I'm so glad to be here. And I just wanted to say, you might recall that at the last city council meeting, we discussed the Community Development Block Grant Program, or CDBG as it's called. And Jennifer Eby with Douglas County was here and presented the background on CDBG, sort of what it's about, why the county withdrew from the program, why they're now interested in re-engaging and reaching out to jurisdictions within the community. So I'll provide a little bit of background, and then tonight, really, the purpose of tonight's meeting is to ask city council to act on a resolution which approves the IGA with Douglas County. So a little bit of background, very briefly, Douglas County, again, seeks to re-engage in the program, to be eligible for grant funding, primarily for low and moderate income residents, for seniors, and for the disabled. The City of Lone Tree has been asked whether it desires to be what they refer to as a participating jurisdiction within Douglas County and CDBG. Next slide. So the city is less than 50,000 in population, so we cannot qualify on our own as a jurisdiction for CDBG funds. But by executing the IGA, the city may, we recognize, may not apply for grants under the small cities or state CDBG programs. Next slide. But as a participant, Lone Tree will be eligible for its residents for projects that could benefit from CDBG funding, such as affordable housing or housing for the disabled. And I think Mayor Malley mentioned at our last meeting, you know, opportunities that are there, hopefully, for facilities like Tall Tills Ranch and for the new affordable housing development coming to the city council's attention near the Ridge Gate Station end of line. So Douglas County Board of County Commissioners has final responsibility for selection of programs or project funding, but the city has a representative on the CDBG board to represent our interests. Next slide. So just to recognize that funds are limited, and there's always more requests than there are funds available, but the CDBG board evaluates these requests against criteria and the priorities that were established in what's called the Consolidated Plan. So the IGA includes requirements for the city to be a recipient for CDBG funding, where they are the applicant for specific projects or activities. The city to date, for the 10 years that were involved in the program, was not the applicant, but it's not to say that we could not be in future years. Next slide. So the IGA remains in effect from 2021 to 2023, and the parties may not terminate or withdraw from the IGA while the agreement is in effect. And the IGA will automatically be renewed for participation in successive three-year periods until the city provides written notice that it elects not to participate in a new qualification period. Next slide. So the IGA that was presented to city council has been reviewed by our city attorney, Linda Michelle. And Linda, I don't know if you want to add any other points regarding the IGA, or we could just open it up for questions by council.
Well, Mayor and Council, thank you, Jennifer. I would just like to add that the agreement is overall in great shape, and I just had a few minor housekeeping modifications that I requested of the county. The resolution accounts for those minor modifications in your approval. And they are really so minor, I hate to even bring them up. So unless you have any specific questions of me, I'll turn it over to you for questions.
Thanks, Linda. Okay, council, any questions for Jennifer or our awesome city attorney? Anything? No? Okay, it is pretty straightforward, and I think it's a great opportunity, particularly given a couple of the projects that are going to be coming to Lone Tree in the next few years. So I will look for a motion from council.
I move to adopt Resolution 20-10, a resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement between the City of Lone Tree and Douglas County regarding the Community Development Block Grant Program for federal fiscal years 2021 through 2023, administered by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. So we are now at the council comment portion of our meeting this evening, and I'll start with Councilmember Anderson.
I am just overwhelmed by the phrase unprecedented time. It is an amazing time to be dealing with local governance in terms of the COVID virus and the other turmoil we have in the country over racial strife and police activity. I am so appreciative of our staff in terms of their expertise and their creativity and the way that they present information to us so that we can make decisions on behalf of our citizens. And just very appreciative of our police department for the ongoing work that they have done in the past and for the work that we're, we know they will do in the future in terms of living up to our values, our mission, and going about it in a way that is respectful to our citizens and to potential victims, if you will, in terms of how we engage the public for law and order in our community. It's just a time, in terms of the unprecedented time, it's also a time where I think we should be very grateful for the type of people we have in Lone Tree to help us maintain a city for the benefit of the city people.
Thanks, Mike. Jay?
You've heard a lot from me already tonight, so I'll keep it brief. But along those same lines, just my appreciation for staff and for everyone on the team in terms of having to really dig in and make some hard decisions. And there's a lot of stuff going on in the country, and it's a difficult time to be in charge at the helm, making, again, really difficult decisions. But again, I applaud all the work. And also, I think back to how proactive we were. I remember right early on at the outbreak, when we, there was still so much uncertainty, we didn't know how this was all going to play out. We, as a city and staff, were really proactive in, okay, let's make some worst-case scenarios, and unfortunately, it kind of came true.
You were a little reactive.
I wish we were wrong. Quick on the draw in terms of that forethought. So just wanted to acknowledge that.
Thanks, Jay. Winn?
Yes, I am grateful to staff because they've continued to focus on programs, you know, variances for businesses, trying to let them have space to serve guests. That's a big deal, especially for the smaller businesses. It's important that we're a partner in helping them get back on their feet. The Arts Center has continued innovations. The Lone Tree Police Department has continued to lead the way and show us that they really have anticipated some of the things that the legislature has deemed important, and they're already part of our training to a large degree. South Suburban opens the pools. I drove by the golf club, and it looks beautiful. It really does. The remodel is really something. So thank you to staff for all of that. I will say on a personal note, next week starts DAR's annual meeting, which is called Our Continental Congress. And instead of 10,000 women descending on Washington, D.C., we are hoping for 150,000 or more to engage online this year, which is really an opportunity. So, you know, it's interesting that out of horribleness can come good things. Thank you.
Thanks, Winn. Kathy?
I would just say, like everyone else, just a lot of gratitude right now for how in this time, things are actually getting back to functioning in some pretty normal ways. I know, I have a huge family, and we really need things to get back to normal soon. I know that's not unlike any of you, and Jay's got it worse than I do on most days. But thinking of, you know, the restaurants opening and the smooth nature in which that's happened, that retail is opening and the smooth nature, and that we are keeping, you know, things kind of static in the midst of reopening, I'm just super grateful that everyone's rallying, even the people who don't agree with the orders and whatnot, that just people are still maintaining some balance of engaging in ways that help us get to the other side of this. And I know our staff and the city in general gets all the kudos for the unbelievable hard work to assess what should we do and then how do we do it, right? And just all the interpretations in a crazy time. So I'm really grateful for that, grateful that we started having our meetings again, like with Ridge Gate and with CML, and just feeling like government is going to get back to work in ways that matter and that us as folks who care about legislation are doing that. Huge thanks to South Suburban. I think they were way out in front of having to make some hard choices early with the tennis and golf and everything else. And again, so many thanks in my email to them for the ability to get outside and change things. So really grateful for that. I'm grateful that next week I'll be traveling to, for the first time since this all happened, to Billings, Montana, to Gillette, Wyoming, to Sheridan, Wyoming, and to Rapid City, South Dakota, to see my son play baseball for his last year. So there's nothing better in my life than that. So just really thanks to everybody for all the good work.
So there's two, you know, Lone Tree has two unofficial mottos that I think have held true during the COVID crisis and will continue to hold true. First being, it's a great day to be in Lone Tree. And it truly is a great day to be in Lone Tree, even given everything that we as a community have been through. And the reason that it's a great day to be in Lone Tree is the second motto, is that we do things the best way, not the expected way. And I think going into this crisis, setting that as our bar for ourselves, whether it's our finance department that works through, and we're still getting the CAFER, and we're getting the clean opinion, even in the midst of what could have been perceived as chaos, I don't think there was. We have had a police department that has led on the front lines of really best practices. And as I've had very challenging conversations with constituents, with other mayors, and continually, when I had the conversations with the chief, just confirmed to me that we were doing the best thing already. The practices that, and policies and procedures that the chief put into place have set us up to be successful. And I think as a community, that is what we've continued to do. We have had great leadership with our city managers and Seth. We set ourselves up to be successful and survive and ride difficult, challenging times. The complete overview and re-hall of our municipal code with the fresh eyes of a different city attorney set us up to be successful. Jay, your great work with liquor enforcement and your team's work to do that set us up to be successful, to process these exemptions and extended premise licenses, the support that we were able to provide to Park Meadows Mall to put that package together with Jeff Hallwell and with Austin Good, the systems that we already had, what Bill Medina did with continuity of operations plan and our emergency. I just want to stop and reflect, now that I get to look at all your faces and say, you know, we will continue, it will continue to be a great day in Lone Tree, because we will continue to do things the best way, not the expected way. And I want to say thank you to all of you and my partners on council for the roles you have played in that. So with that, the regular council meeting is adjourned, but that's not all, folks, because we've got a couple study session agenda items that we need to get to. And I'm not sure how we transition back to, well, so I'll look to my esteemed advisors. I know that-
I think we just keep it right here.
We'll keep it going, and we are now going back to our study session, which again is where no decisions are made, but a lot of things are talked about. And we are going to pick up with, I think Uli did a great job with the overview of the budget. Does anybody, she may be off, because I said we'd come back to it, but is there anything? She answered all of my questions. Are there any outstanding questions from council on the 2020 budget amendment that we will continue to talk about until we actually act on it in August? Any follow-up? Okay, I would encourage council, if there's something you think about later, just email Uli, and she will share it with us. All right, so let's move in then to the public health order. And Bill Medina, you didn't draw the complete short straw, because that'll be Jeff. You get to go home a little earlier, but is Bill available to brief us on the public health update?
Yep.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Since the last time we met, there have been a few developments when it comes to the public health orders. On the 5th of June, the governor announced the sixth amended Safer at Home Order. And while it didn't have a lot of changes, there were some pretty significant ones in it. So the first one was that they changed the language for vulnerable individuals, and instead of directing them to remain at home or in the great outdoors, they're encouraging them to do so. They changed the capacity for playgrounds from 10 to 25, and gyms from 10 to 25% capacity or up to 50 people. Another significant one was they added a paragraph for life rights, which allows weddings and funerals and graduations for 50% of venue capacity up to 50 people. And then yesterday, he announced three pieces of guidance that are in development for the Safer at Home Order that are of interest to us. So these are out for input until 5 o'clock tomorrow, and then they will go into effect, hopefully, on the 18th if they follow through with what they promised. So this is draft guidance for residential camps and indoor and outdoor events. And when it comes to indoor and outdoor events, the indoor events are limited to 25% capacity and then up to, depending on the size of the venue, up to 100 people. For outdoor events, it's 50% capacity up to 175. So if we apply that guidance to the Arts Center, for example, the event hall would be able to take up to 50 people, the main stage 75, the lobby 50, and the Terrace Theater 125. And once again, these go into effect supposedly on the 18th. So the next big piece of news that came out yesterday was the announcing of Level 3, which is Protect Our Neighbors. And that is going to be out for public input until the 18th, and then will go into effect at the end of June. And essentially, what this does is this takes the public health orders and restrictions and puts them into the hands of the local jurisdictions. And so local jurisdictions, based upon the virus level that's in their community, their capacity to treat people that are COVID-positive, and their ability to test and trace, will be able to enter Level 3 or not. So we're going to see different communities transitioning into Level 3, and others will remain in the Safer at Home. And I do expect that, I would imagine that- And I do expect that, I would imagine that Douglas County would immediately attempt to request to go into Level 3 based on the positive data that exists for the spread of the disease in Douglas County. So essentially, this would open up everything at 50% capacity, not to exceed 500 people at any given venue, but there would still require social distancing to be maintained at 60%. So we'll see, there's, you know, this right now is not fully fleshed out. There's going to be a lot of guidance that comes into the Protect Our Neighbor space, but it certainly is a positive indication that we're moving in the right direction in Colorado. Pending your questions, that's all I have, Mayor and City Council.
Thanks, Bill. Okay, any questions? I think it's potentially great news for us.
Yes.
Moving forward. And Bill, again, thank you for your great work, keeping us up to date on the rapidly changing health, public health updates, and for your great work positioning us, if you didn't hear it before, to go into this crisis with our Continuity of Operations Plan. So thank you, and we look forward to more good news from you. It's about time. No, I'm just kidding. All right, thanks. Moving on, which isn't going to be as good news, but it has nothing to do with the presenter. It's our legislative update, and we'll turn it over to Jeff Hallwell. God bless you, Jeff.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. You saved the best for last, in my opinion.
That's right. That's right. Amen.
And, you know, I'll keep it a little light, but we'll give you as much information as you need as well. But, you know, I think the most important bill passed this session was yesterday at about 4:00 p.m. when they adjourned. I actually included this slide because it's kind of extraordinary. They are officially adjourned for the session. Unless there's a special session, this legislature is not meeting again. So even locally, you know, Senator Smallwood is up for reelection, Senator Tate, District 27, is not running again, so there will be new people there. Our own Senator Holbert has two more years, so he'll be around. But when the legislature convenes again, likely in next January, it'll be a different group of folks, and that plays a role into everything that they decide. Next slide, please. The big thing that they met again on their second portion of their session was around the state budget. We talked about this last time. The budget was passed, but actually out a lot of controversy compared to everything else. This $3 billion, it was about $3.4 billion that they found in reductions from a variety of ways. But what is worthy of note is that it still preserved the senior homestead and disabled veteran exemptions that, you know, commonly are a threat when there's a budget crisis on the 6th of June, this passed third reading in the Senate. So next slide, please. The bill we've been following all year, House Bill 1001, nicotine product regulation, did officially pass on the 5th of June, so we expect the governor to sign it, and we've talked about it a lot, so we'll be prepared to react as it becomes a statute. Next slide, please. The Sales and Use Tax Task Force also is, will extend for five more years. On the 4th of June, this was officially passed, will remain engaged, obviously, for the next five years and hopefully continue with the great progress or with the great defense that we played with that for the last several years as well. Next slide. This, the reforms that have been made around para, we mentioned this last time, that previous years allocated $250 million to para in this fiscal year, plus other automatic adjustments, were a casualty of the budget. They are no longer going to be providing that appropriation to para this year. And so it postpones many of the para reforms, and this passed officially, and it was a result of them using many tactics to balance the state budget. Next slide, please. This, I won't dive into this bill, but obviously, this was the big public safety bill, Senate Bill 217, officially passed on the 12th of June. The governor has not signed it yet, so until that happens, it's not official. But of course, they expect him to sign it at a date TBD. Next slide, please. There are three really big economic development pieces of legislation that are worth mentioning. The first, the Senate Bill 222, uses CARES Act revenue to do a statewide business grant program up to $20 million. And what they're hoping to do is allow this grant program to flow to companies with 25 employees or less and give preference to businesses that did not receive a PPP loan. So though, you know, I know many Lone Tree businesses receive these, I bet there's a few in the woodworks that are still looking for help, and this will be a new opportunity for us to be working with down the road. Next slide, please.
Hey, Jeff, I know, we're quickly moving through this, but I think Council would be very interested in making sure we get information about SB 202222 out to our businesses, those small businesses that didn't do it. So let's, and I know you're doing it anyway, but I just want to reinforce that. Thanks.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Absolutely. That'll be a great thing to promote, and it'll be administered by the State Office of Economic Development and the Economic Development Commission. So when they have the rules together, we'll absolutely get that out.
Great.
1413 is a very similar bill, but it's actually a loan program instead of a grant program, also administered by the Office of Economic Development. They will be offering loans, five-year loans with, you know, $30,000 to $500,000 amounts and targeted to businesses with 500 employees. This will be funded with the sale of insurance premium tax credits. It's a common method for funding, you know, state programs. They created a program many years ago called CAPCO that did the same thing, is that the state will sell tax credits and then look for private sector match, hoping, I think they're hoping for a 501 match from the private sector for a total of $250 million in this fund that they would use for loans to small business. Also passed on the 6th of June. Next slide, please. This is the one that caused the most anxiety amongst the business community. House Bill 1420 was a very large bill that reduced or took away tax credits to all kinds of business entities and a variety of different tax credits that had been established over the years. And what they initially called it was the Tax Fairness Act, and this, you know, the work done by business groups specifically, but others as well, pared it back to not be nearly as damaging as people had feared. There are still some that might affect, you know, companies in the City of Lone Tree. The one I see in particular, it keeps a, it takes away the insurance premium tax credit, you know, or insurance premium tax reduction that a regional headquarters can take. So if you're a insurance company, let's say like CNA in Lone Tree, they receive, they only pay 50% of the premium tax that they would have to pay because they have a regional headquarters in Colorado. They'll now have to pay the full freight of their tax for all premiums sold in Colorado. And I don't know if it'll change things or not. A lot of things are going to change in that business, but we'll keep our eye on it because there are some that still could impact local business. Next slide, please. This one, you know, the ability to take home drinks from your favorite local restaurant is now codified in law with Senate Bill 213, and it made official the ability for, you know, restaurants to sell to-go drinks to their customers in perpetuity, passed on the 13th of June of this year. Next slide. Lots of different employment law bills were introduced. The most, you know, significant that passed at the very end was the creation of a sick leave, a paid sick leave program for, you know, employers in Colorado. For the remainder of the year, it requires paid sick leave for any relationship to COVID-19. But beginning in January of 2021, it requires employers to provide one hour of sick leave for every 30 hours worked, or in the end, a maximum of 48 hours of sick leave to employees, you know, that, especially to companies that weren't previously providing it. Obviously, a lot do. We'll have to evaluate if our own PTO policies, you know, match with this requirement relative to sick leave, but it's definitely a new statewide initiative. The folks that had been promoting this for years never got quite exactly what they wanted, but it's definitely a new subset of state law. Next slide, please. And now all the election stuff. First, this wasn't a bill, but we talked about the executive order allowing electronic signatures for petition gatherers. The State Supreme Court is considering the appeal on this. Any day now, we're hoping to hear a ruling. I've not heard, you know, a projection of when that will happen, but the State Supreme Court is now reviewing that appeal by the business community. Next slide. The trans bond ballot initiative that was supposed to happen this November will now be moved to the November of 2021. Next slide. This is new. House Bill 1427 referred a ballot issue to create a cigarette, tobacco, and nicotine products tax in addition to what already exists, and we'll see this on the November ballot. It's a, I didn't include all of the formulas because it's significant, and not only is it a tax, but it also sends a floor on, you know, how much a pack of cigarettes or a, you know, can of tobacco may cost. But it, so the formula is complicated depending on which kind of product it is. But what's interesting here is that it creates a fund where 73% of it goes to the new state preschool programs fund, and then the other 27% is sent to local governments. We already received some of that, but there is a local government component to this if it passes in November. And then finally, two items about the Gallagher Amendment. Senate Concurrent Resolution 001 is a, was now a referred measure to repeal property tax assessment rates that the registered electors in the state can decide on whether they want to get rid of Gallagher. What it would do is, you know, remove the requirement that they maintain the 45% to 55% statewide proportion of assessment for personal to business property. And then to the business community, if this passes, it's actually a pretty big deal to, in the good way. Their 29% ratio that they have to be assessed at for real, for real and personal property will likely change a lot and probably in their favor if this were to pass. And that will, is something we will see on the November ballot. And then the final slide here is a conforming bill. All it does is it allows, it requires the assessment rate that is currently in place to be frozen if the ballot issue passes in November, so that the districts that are concerned about the falling assessment rate, especially relative to, you know, residential property, can be, you know, held whole to where they are today if this were to pass in November. So that was my final slide. I'm happy to answer any questions, and maybe the last legislative update you receive in 2020.
You wish.
That'll be right. It'll be ballot issues. Right, you're right, you're right.
I was like, who are you? You just ruined it, Jeff. No, great job getting through all of that. Council, was there any questions or follow-up on any of those? That really was great, Jeff. Tremendous work. Okay, and with that, that concludes the items on our study session, and I don't have to adjourn because we were in study session. So wonderful seeing all your faces. Now get out. Arts Center needs to, no, seriously, thanks, everybody. Thanks, it really, thanks to Bill and Jeff for extended play time.
You're welcome. And thank you, Mayor.